So that means, that phone call means that we have started being televised. I think we're half a minute before seven o'clock, but I'll formally start the special meeting right now. I'll introduce myself. I'm Richard Soa. I'm the chairman of the Development Commission. And I'll ask the commissioners to introduce themselves. That's just right now.
My name is Mel Morgan. I'm the vice chair.
Mike Brennan.
Richard Sanford.
Kevin Price.
And I'd like to introduce Ray Liao as Development Commission's legal representative or attorney. And I'd like her to summarize maybe in a context of a letter that we just received earlier today and give us some alternatives or some course of action that we might pursue.
Sure. So as the Development Commission received this morning, they are in receipt of a letter from the applicant, Mr. Schneider, on behalf of Foster Pepper. And it is entitled, "Applicant's Objection to Jurisdiction and Motion to Stay." So this is a special meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act. This is not one of your regularly scheduled meetings. And as a result, the topics that can be addressed in the course of a special meeting need to stay true to the agenda that has been published and noticed for this meeting. You can change it 24 hours before the meeting, but because it's a special meeting, you can't actually deviate from this agenda in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. It would allow you to, if you so choose, to have, hold discussion on issues that aren't on the agenda, but you would not be able to take final action on that item that's not listed on the agenda. There is an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act that concerns portions of meetings of a quasi-judicial body which relates to a quasi-judicial matter between named parties as distinguished from a matter having general effect on the public or on a class or group of people. But unless all of the parties stipulate that this indeed is outside of the Open Public Meetings Act because of that context, my recommendation to you would be to presume that this is a special meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act and would not be able to take final action on something not on the agenda. So if you proceed with assuming this is subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, you have some choices short of taking final action. You can, you can't make a final decision, but you can, you can deliberate and hear information, or excuse me, you can hold discussion on this motion if you so choose. I would recommend that you allow the parties procedurally to address how they might address this in the proceeding this evening, and you probably should do that at the outside. Or you can decide to continue the discussion to a future proceeding, particularly because I understand this public hearing is not anticipated to conclude this evening. And you can, you can hold the public hearing and decide not to discuss this issue, or you can also decide that you're going to put off the decision and you're also going to put off the public hearing. So you actually have a lot of choices, but you just can't take an action on that, on this letter item unless we are outside the context of the Open Public Meetings Act. So lots of, lots of choices, but I guess as a threshold, whether or not you can take action at the beginning, that's the first point of order that you really need to decide. And then from there, you can decide to what extent you want to hear deliberations on that tonight.
So how do we decide our right to take action or not? How is, how do we do that?
You have the option to decide as a, as a commission that this is a special meeting. You also have this decision, you could, you could ask all parties to stipulate in writing, I would recommend, that this is outside the context of an open public meeting pursuant to RCW 42.30.140 subcourt two. So that would mitigate your risk of being found subsequently to be in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Sorry, to stipulate so that we can, in terms of the action before we would have it here, talking about the executive session, or is it just an option on the?
No, just to take action on this.
Just to make a decision.
To make a decision on this.
Okay.
Short of mitigating your risk as, in terms of taking, taking action in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, I would, I would recommend that to you, that all the parties would, would need to agree that this is not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, this, this issue of the meeting, because it hasn't been noticed on your agenda. But short of that, I would, I would.
Which, this meeting in general, this overall meeting, since it's a special meeting?
Correct. But it's the, this topic not being on the agenda.
Oh, the question, right, right, right. Oh, sorry, sorry.
The ability to take action on this motion is not on the agenda. So the only way that you can take action on this tonight is by making a determination that it is not, that we are, we are outside the context of the Open Public Meetings Act because there's a, you guys are, because you are a quasi-judicial matter and it's relating to, excuse me, you are a quasi-judicial body and this is relating to a quasi-judicial matter.
So, just trying to get more clarity on exactly the steps or options. So if we didn't get the stipulation that we were operating outside the Open Public Meeting from the parties, can we hear the discussion, presentation from the parties on responding to the letter, present, presenting the letter, responding to the letter, but not act on it tonight?
Correct.
Okay. The other is have the stipulation, take the testimony, and then make a decision if there's agreement to operate outside the Open Public Meeting framework under the statute.
Correct.
And then the other option is, let's just go home, we'll deal with it at a regular meeting when we put it on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Or, or you can say, we're going to put this issue on the side and proceed with the public hearing as scheduled, but take no action and no deliberation on this. We will continue this issue to a later date when it can be noticed or as part of your regular meeting. So lots of, lots of choices. Sorry, it's not terribly linear.
Right, right. I got you. Yeah, I know, I got you. Just trying to figure out what the right path is going to be here.
Your recommendation was to continue with the agenda. Did you agree with him?
My recommendation is but for a stipulation that, that to deviate from the agenda and take final action on this motion would be outside the bounds of the Open Public Meetings Act. My recommendation would be to certainly not take action on this. As to whether or not you decide to take testimony from, or argument from either side, to deliberate and ask questions, that is completely within your purview as to whether or not you want to address that this evening before the public hearing or address it at a later date and allow the public to.
So would we need to get in writing permission to discuss the letter and have presentations of the letter to help us understand whether both sides of that issue?
I, I would, here's what I would recommend at this point. I, I think that you might be able to ask the parties to speak to this. They haven't, they haven't spoken to this issue at all. This is sort of my out-the-gate framework for you all, but if you want to invite each side to make comments on that at the start of the meetings, that we can, you can figure out whether or not, how you're going to proceed with your agenda.
Okay.
So we agree with that, too? And it would seem, it would seem that hearing, hearing the discussion from both parties on, on the validity of the claims or their positions would really help us understand whether.
On this letter, this proposal, the question of jurisdiction.
So do I need to get people to read that?
Not necessarily if you do not plan to take action.
We won't take action on it. What we would really like to do is hear some discussion from both parties on the claims made in the letter, the pros and the cons, the, the yeses and the noes, if that makes sense.
Do we agree?
And if they're prepared to do it. So we'd like to hear from you if you're willing to speak to it.
Absolutely. That's why we're here. So if I may, I'll just introduce the side of the room. I'm Pat Schneider. Next to me is Jackie Carey, my colleague. Next to her is Tia Heim, who's a representative of what I would call Shelter because it's easier to say than IHIF-C. And Gary Young, who's a principal at Shelter, is behind Tia. We have brought this motion for both technical, legal reasons and temporary practical reasons from our point of view. I think the code is clear that only the Development Services Director is to decide vesting issues, whether someone, in this case, is vested to the regulations in the development agreement that governed the Highlands for more than 20 years, or whether the applicant, Shelter, is subject to the new regulations that the council adopted earlier this year. The code clearly says that the Development Director, in consultation with the city attorney, makes that determination. Mr. Niven told us in a letter in April that we weren't vested. We tried to appeal that, the city opposed it, and so we weren't able to challenge that decision at that point in time. But in the staff report, he makes the vesting determination. He uses that word, determination. He says we're not vested, and he asks you all to deny the applications because they don't conform to the replacement regulations. There's no dispute that the applications do not comply with the replacement regulations. They were prepared and submitted before the new replacement regulations were adopted, and we believe firmly and completely that we are vested to the development regulations. So by bringing this issue to you in the staff report and asking you to make a decision, the only issue in dispute, whether we're vested or not, is an issue over which you do not have jurisdiction, given the clarity in the code that the Development Director makes that decision. The law is clear, there are many cases we could have cited, we cited a couple of them in the letter, that say a body that lacks jurisdiction can't do anything except decide that it doesn't have jurisdiction. So what happens if we go ahead and hold this hearing? Well, first of all, it's going to be a lengthy hearing, take up many mikes, many evenings, because it's not just simply an issue of what the law says. We also have an extensive factual record we need to make because we have evidence, testimony, many exhibits, witness testimony that shows the determination the department made in this case is inconsistent with the need by our representations to us, inconsistent with how the department is treating other applicants. So we have to be able to make that factual record, testimony and many exhibits. That's, you all, you're not set up for that kind of adversarial quasi-judicial decision as far as I've been able to determine. You don't have rules that would guide you in this situation. As far as I know, you know, you just, you don't operate that way because it's not part of what code says you're supposed to do, which is to make decisions about design and so forth. So you're not set up to do it in terms of your rules, in terms of your experience, I'm assuming in terms of your background, and you don't have jurisdiction. So what happens? Let's say we spend the next two months in special meetings in front of you, presenting all of this evidence, presenting all of these exhibits. What are you going to do with that? You can't make a decision because you don't have jurisdiction. So at the end of that, if you can't make a decision, how do we, how do we move on to the next level? There's nothing for either side to appeal, either to the hearing examiner or the court, because you can't make a decision. It's, it's a complete waste of your time, our energy, our resources to conduct a hearing on this issue in front of a body that doesn't have jurisdiction. And I think the law is absolutely clear that you don't, because you don't get to second guess and overrule the decisions that the Development Director made. So for both the technical, legal reason that you don't have jurisdiction and for the practical reality of presenting all this evidence, when you can't do anything with it, we respectfully and sincerely ask you to decide that because you don't have jurisdiction, you shouldn't take action of any sort, up or down, one way or another, until the vesting issue is resolved by a body that does have jurisdiction. That's what we're asking. Just don't waste everyone's time and energy. Sit tight on this issue until we can get it resolved, and then, then something will come back in front of you.
Sorry. Any questions?
In terms of both sides presenting, and then could we have a chance to ask some questions?
I think that would be fun.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Zach Lell, on behalf of the Issaquah Department of Development Services. I'm with the city attorney's office. With me is my love partner, Jeff Dunbar, to my right, and Development Services Director, Keith Niven, to my left, and land manager, Lucy Sloman, to his left. Thank you. The city just received, as the commission did, IHIFC's objection letter and motion for a stay this morning, and in light of the extremely compressed timeframe, we haven't, obviously, had an opportunity to prepare a formal written response. However, there are a few points that I would like to make before the commission considers the applicant's request. First, what the applicant is requesting here is extraordinary. In staff's view, this request for a stay, as well as the underlying attempt to appeal the city's staff report, has no basis in the city's procedural regulations. Under the city's code, the Development Commission has the exclusive jurisdiction to review and to issue final decisions on site development permits for projects that are located within the Issaquah Highlands and that meet the project size and location thresholds specified in IMC 1819B 270. It is equally clear from the same code provision that the city's Level III procedural process, inclusive of a pre-decisional public hearing before the Development Commission, is required in this context. What IHIFC is attempting to do is to file what's known as an interlocutory appeal of the city's staff report, rather than waiting for the commission to actually issue its final decision in the manner contemplated by the city's code. The staff report is not, and is not purport to be in any manner, an independently appealable final decision in its own right. While the city's code does empower the Development Services Director to make determinations regarding the vested status of land use applications, this determination is simply to facilitate the city's ultimate review of each proposal by clarifying which body of regulations will be used to evaluate it. Nothing in the code remotely suggests that this procedural determination is appealable by itself. If a party ultimately feels that the city applied the wrong body of regulations to its project applications, its recourse is to wait until a final decision has been made on the application itself and then to appeal it in the ordinary course. That's the first point. The second point is that this precise issue has already been considered and formally addressed by the city's hearing examiner. And in that regard, I'd like to respectfully direct the commission's attention to the Development Services Director's April 4, 2018, letter to the applicant's counsel. This is in exhibit 10 to your staff report. This letter explained the city's position regarding the vested status of IHIFC's pending project applications. And just like IHIFC is attempting to do now with respect to the staff report for tonight's hearing, IHIFC previously attempted to appeal the city's April 4 letter to the city's hearing examiner. The examiner ultimately granted the city's motion to dismiss that appeal, concluding correctly that the letter was not a final decision that could be independently appealed. IHIFC is now attempting to re-litigate that precise point. And if it pleased the commission, I would like to distribute copies of the hearing examiner's decision in IHIFC's previous administrative appeal. The decision was issued on June 28, 2018, and it's under number HEA 2018-2, number Site APN 2724069208. And the relevant analysis and conclusion is on pages 5 and 6 of the decision.
Yes.
Finally, in the end, the city recognizes that it can't prevent the applicant from filing an appeal of the staff report to the hearing examiner, just like it couldn't physically prevent the applicant from filing an appeal of the city's previous April 4 letter. Instead, the city can only wait and, like it did before, file a motion to dismiss the appeal. If the commission wishes to take this issue under advisement or ultimately decides to grant IHIFC's motion for a stay of this proceeding while its hearing examiner appeal goes forward, then that is the commission's prerogative. But I would like to be very clear for the record that staff is fully prepared tonight to go forward with this hearing as scheduled. And if these proceedings are paused and delayed while IHIFC pursues what the city strongly believes is a baseless administrative appeal of the staff report, I would like the record to reflect that the resulting delay is due to IHIFC's own actions and not those of the city. Thank you.
I would like an opportunity to respond if I may, since I have the motion for it. So Mr. Lell is, is correct that he tried to appeal the letter, and Mr. Lell argued that a decision had not been made, it was just a letter, and therefore there was nothing to appeal. And he succeeded with that argument. Now what he is saying is, well, staff, you know, we're, early April to mid-September, what has happened during that time? Nothing. The applicant has been sitting here unable to do anything with his property, waiting for this staff report. The staff report does contain a vesting determination. It says it does. So now the city's position is, and I'm sure Mr. Lell will correct me if I'm wrong, but the city's position tonight is, you go ahead and conduct the meaningless hearing that I just described and take all this evidence and all of this testimony, and you can't make a decision on the vesting determination. Apparently, it either hasn't been made or you don't have, I didn't hear any dispute that you don't have jurisdiction over it. So again, the city is asking for months of delay and meaningless expense of resources and your time and energy over an issue you have no jurisdiction over. And what are you going to do at the end? You're going to deny the, the applications because they don't comply with replacement regulations. That's not in dispute. We concede that tonight. So this hearing is entirely meaningless. The city can get this resolved at any point, and it could have at any point since April. If the city is going to say that the staff report is not a final determination on this issue, it can make an appealable decision. It can make a Level 0 or Level 1 decision. It can issue a code interpretation, and we can get the vesting issue resolved in front of a body with jurisdiction. The city is refusing to do that, and it is instead creating this meaningless, wasteful, damaging process. That is the choice in front of you. Are you going to go ahead and endure a couple of months' worth of testimony on an issue that you can make no decision on? The staff is in control of this, and if they want to decide that, no, you have to do that, apparently they can do it, and we may not succeed in front of the hearing examiner. We may have to wait. But if we have to wait, it will be at your expense as well as ours because we will have done this meaningless hearing that you can't even make findings and decisions on because you don't have jurisdiction.
I briefly replied, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I fully understand council's frustration about the length of time that any quasi-judicial proceeding takes. It's inherently a time-consuming process because it's supposed to be conducted in a careful, thorough manner with due regard to the party's respective rights. That's part and parcel of the quasi-judicial land use decisional process. But at the end of the day, what we're all left with, both parties and the commission, is what the city's procedural regulations, as codified in the IMC, prescribe for proceedings like this. And the procedures that the IMC, IMC contains could not be clearer. A site development permit within the Issaquah Highlands, meeting the structural and locational criteria of IHIFC's proposals, requires a Level III review by the Development Commission. You are the only body in the city capable of making a final decision on that proposal. And while the staff through the director has indicated what body of regulations should guide your analysis, what body of regulations you should use to evaluate the proposal, at the end of the day, Mr. Niven, as the director, doesn't have jurisdiction to issue a final decision on the underlying permit. So this process, as meaningless as Mr. Schneider contends that it might be, is ultimately one that the code requires you to take. And that's why we're here today. I don't have any particular interest in delaying this any more than anyone else does, and I certainly empathize with the desire of people to have an expeditious ending to this process. But at the end of the day, we need to follow the procedure that the code indicates, and that's what staff has attempted to do here.
And I could not more profoundly disagree. And I know you need to put an end to this back and forth at some point, but I think that is fundamentally and profoundly wrong. And I would be happy to address it if you can, if you will give me the opportunity.
I'll give you one more shot.
Thank you. So to say that you have to go through an entire quasi-judicial process to reject an application because it's not consistent with the code is ridiculous. There is no jurisdiction in this state that has that practice, and there is nothing in this code that requires it. If someone comes in and submits an application for a multifamily building in a single-family zone, they don't put you through an entire quasi-judicial process to reject your application. If something doesn't comply with the regulations, it's not even accepted for processing. So if the department has made a decision that, that we are subject to the replacement regulations and the application clearly doesn't comply with those regulations, it can simply say no. And as I pointed out, the department can say no in multiple ways, a Level 0, a Level 1, a code interpretation decision. It can do that. It's choosing not to do that. Nothing in the code compels it. So there's absolutely no reason except the exercise of discretion on the part of the department that has put us in this situation.
So that clears everything up. So questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one question. I lost track. Is there currently an issue in front of the hearing examiner regarding the decision of the director? So the letter of April 4 was, you presented, you provided the hearing examiner's decision on that, but I thought I heard you say that, that there's another appeal in front of the hearing examiner related to this matter.
There is not, and if I said that, I apologize. I didn't mean to mischaracterize that. The appeal decision from the hearing examiner that was issued in June of this year was a separate appeal, an appeal filed by IHIFC, I believe, in April of 2018, ultimately resolved in the city's favor through a motion for dismissal. It was granted in June of 2018. That case was not further appealed to the Superior Court, and it is essentially resolved at this point. I only provided copies of it for context and to demonstrate, hopefully, to the commissioners that this is precisely the same issue regarding jurisdiction, regarding the intent and effect of the director's construction of the vesting framework that applies in this context, so you could understand that what IHIFC is attempting to do tonight through its motion for stay in its attempt to appeal the staff report is almost identical to their previous attempt, their unsuccessful attempt to appeal Mr. Niven's April 4 letter.
And the city's position that, again, it's not ripe for appeal because a decision has not been made?
That is correct. And if the commission pleases, the city's first witness that it intends to call when and if the hearing actually proceeds is Mr. Niven, and he will testify to his official interpretation of the various IMC provisions that bear on this procedural issue. And if the, if the commission would prefer, I would be happy to call Mr. Niven right now and lead him through a series of questions so you, you have the benefit of his official interpretation of those code sections.
Can I take one step backwards?
Certainly.
So the applicant's attorney maintains it's not in our jurisdiction. City says it is in our jurisdiction. Who decides if it is or isn't? How do we move forward on any action? Is that our decision to decide whether it's in our jurisdiction?
Commissioner, I appreciate the question. I think that might be more appropriately directed to your legal counsel. I'm, I'm an advocate here on behalf of staff. I can't advise you on that point.
Can I, can I ask a question? I guess, if you don't mind, you're saying that the director's decision on vesting is their decision and we have no say over it. That's correct? Yes, and in the letter, we quote the code provision that says only the director makes that decision. So you're saying that we have no right to question their decision? Yes. Because the code also does not give you appellate jurisdiction over decisions made by the director. And would you agree with that, too?
I concur that the, the code delegates the authority to the director to determine I concur that the code delegates the authority to the director to determine which body of regulations, a particular application, should be evaluated against. But I would caveat that heavily by noting that that must inherently occur in the context of the broader project review procedure, which in this case is a level three process requiring a Development Commission final decision that is then appealable to the hearing examiner.
So if, I guess the question is, if the director has the right to make the decision on vesting, and we can't question that, and if the director comes to us and says, this is the status of vesting, we can't question that. So if we can't question that, what would stop us from moving forward on a project that they put in front of us with a level three review? Because we have to presume that they have the right to make that decision and we can't question it, right?
Again, I will answer your question, but I would suggest that because you can't question it, why are we here in front of you? But the problem that is presented to us procedurally is that an appeal from you to the hearing examiner is a closed record appeal. We can't present additional evidence in front of the hearing examiner. All the evidence has to be taken here. So they are putting us in the impossible situation of trying to make a record on the vesting issue that you have no jurisdiction over because that's the record that will go to the hearing examiner. He does have jurisdiction over the director's decisions. But if we make the record in front of you and you don't have jurisdiction, as I said, the case law is clear, you can't even make findings and conclusions. You can't make a decision. So how is that leading to a resolution of this issue?
Because from our perspective, we wouldn't be making a decision on jurisdiction on vesting, I'm sorry, because we don't have that right to. We would just be making a decision on the proposal, right?
Which is not-
We would hear all the evidence you want to put up, but our final decision would only be on the proposal itself, the three applications.
If you decide and proceed in that manner, it means that you will be making a final decision on something that isn't in dispute. We do, again, we do not disagree that we, I mean, we agree that we do not comply with the replacement regulations. That's not in dispute. You can decide that issue this evening. But the problem is, we have to make the record. So you're going to have to sit here and take evidence, make evidentiary rulings, decide when Mr. Lell and I disagree with one another, you know, who's right. You're going to have to take all that evidence on an issue that you can't make any decision on.
To the question. We've got a question.
What was that?
Did you want me to address that question?
Sure.
Well, I will tell you that at least at the outset, that I similarly have been able to review this for less than 12 hours. So the best answer at the moment that I can give you is that, you know, there are provisions of the code, multiple provisions of the code that define what the scope and authority that the Development Commission has here. And that, like, based for the purposes of this evening, is my best response to you. Most, all of the provisions speak to the process and the standards for making a decision on a level three site development permit. The ones that, I'll just rattle off the provisions for the benefit of the commission that I, and I'll summarize them for the purposes of quickly illuminating you. Section 1803.040 subpar B provides that you shall review and make the decision on all elements, including design and technical of a series of land use actions, including site development permits. The code provision cited by the applicant, 1803.080, speaks to the objective of the Development Commission, which is to determine compliance with the design criteria checklist. 18.03.100, oh gosh, I can't even remember my handwriting, things up so pretty. Adopt rules and regulations as necessary for the conduct of business. 18.04.430, process and decision, subpar B, can make decisions to approve, condition, deny. This is about the process of site development permit review. The decision to approve, condition, or deny shall be based on staff report, applicable criteria, public comment, discussion of the issues. And then the approval criteria is listed in the next subsection, point 440, level three permits decided in accordance with 1804 using approval criteria in 18.07, including if applicable, development regulations, design criteria checklist, and other applicable approval criteria. So in terms of the code, that's the scope and authority that you've been given, is effectively to review a permit consistent with the scope that's been identified within the code. I think, I don't think anyone is in disagreement here that that jurisdiction that's outlined there speaks to vesting at all.
Does not speak to vesting.
It does not speak to vesting at all. It talks about reviewing the permit in compliance with the standards and statutes in the code.
Can I ask a follow-up question to counsel on this? So if we are reviewing the applications under the jurisdiction as defined in the C's code for the Development Commission, and it doesn't include the question of vesting, but it would include designs, meeting design standards, et cetera, of the standards that have been defined as applicable by the director, the replacement regulations, then would we limit the amount of, could we limit the amount of testimony and discussion to just that and not even include conversation, testimony, et cetera, about the question of vesting?
You could, so two ways to answer this. So one, and let me see, this might need clarification, are you asking whether or not you can preclude any evidence on that question of vesting? Or are you asking whether or not you can preclude your decision as addressing that?
Just a second. Can we eliminate the discussion of vesting and go specifically to the things that we have jurisdiction over and make a decision on that?
Right, that's correct. So we would be hearing evidence, considering the application materials for the permit, the three site development permits that are before the commission, make a determination on compliance or not, make a standard or not permit, and make our decision based on that. The technical question about vesting, if we conclude that it's not within our jurisdiction, the document would stand as it is, be part of the record, but our determination would consider that?
Yeah, so if I may repeat back, to make sure I'm clear in answering your question, you could allow each party to put information onto the record, and I would advise you to not limit their ability to do that. But at the end of the day, you decide to make a decision that does not address the question of vesting, I do think that is absolutely within, you're right, because that is consistent with the authority that's given to you under the code. Decision on the site development permit and the standards is set forth in the code, that you can effectively let that evidence sit on the record and not make a determination one way or the other on the process.
So can I ask another question to counsel? So I'm just trying to figure out how to navigate through this, what our options are. So because we have a special meeting tonight, the agenda did not include discussion, deliberation, decision-making on the question that we're discussing now, the question of vesting that was addressed by the letter we received today. If we were tonight to say, take discussion on that, additional discussion on that, hear from the director, et cetera, and then our next scheduled meeting, whenever that turns out to be, include as part of the agenda the potential for an executive session with the commission, with our counsel, and then include as part of the agenda that topic. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get clear for the commission what our legal option and/or risks are for the path that we choose to follow here? It's hard to do that on the fly in a meeting tonight.
I would say, just to take this one step at a time, it sounds like you're, the first decision to make is whether or not you're going to take an action, and you've taken the deliberation, and I think I just want to make sure that you guys are clear on what your next step is tonight, from the procedural standpoint. And then thereafter, in terms of putting this on the agenda for a decision at a future meeting, you have the ability to do that. The question of executive session, I would recommend that we review that and deal with that issue once you, you know, potentially at the end of the proceeding tonight or in the future public, in that next session, so we can make that determination about whether or not that fits within the scope of the executive session.
Okay. Good. I have a question of the city. Listen, general, if an applicant came in and said, you want to do this project, and the city's ready to bring it to the Development Commission, and the applicant said, hold on, we want to hold off on that, don't take it to the Development Commission yet, would the city typically say, okay, we'll delay that at the applicant's request?
So the city code talks about inactive permits, and there's provisions in it for a certain period of time where if something sits on the books, we can call it, we can basically call it inactive and then not a permit. So, you know, there is the opportunity to agree to a delay. That is not the case here.
Can I ask a question about the staff report? I'm not, I'm not sure who to address this to. They present three alternatives that we may consider tonight, and, you know, these all seem to present an alternative that we haven't discussed. One is to remand, you know, and this is specifically for the retail development application. Remand it back to staff to review as-is with recommendations, then we approve or deny. Alternate two, approve as-is. And three, place the application out of hold. Can we speak to that a little bit, stat?
To the alternatives?
Yeah.
So the staff report was written with alternatives based on us knowing that there was going to be some differences of opinion here at this meeting, this evening. You know, ultimately, the commission, you know, I think the city code is clear whose decision vesting is the responsibility of. If the commission, however, wanted to, heard the arguments from the applicant and decided the city erred, the commission could remand this back to the city to review under the provisions of the now terminated development agreement. We would then have the opportunity then to appeal that decision to the hearing examiner. So what we try to do is create, I think, a balanced playing field for you all so that you could think about this objectively. And ultimately, if you think we made an error in our decision, great, we may have made an error. I'm not saying we did. But that's something that we're open to hearing that conversation, if ultimately that is a decision that the commission wanted to make. We would take that under consideration, and then we would have choices on what we did with that, if that's ultimately the outcome that the commission made. So we wanted to present that as an alternative. It's not our recommended alternative, obviously, but it is an alternative. And so I think what we were trying to do is provide you with all the alternatives so that you could think about this reasonably. At the time we wrote the staff reports, we did not, at that point, have counsel lined up for you. And I think what we wanted to make sure is that you guys had all the tools you needed to make a good decision through this process. So that was the intent and why the staff report was written the way it was.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I think the critical point from staff's perspective is that there needs to be a record made on these issues. I think we have a fundamental difference of agreement, or difference of opinion with the applicant regarding the extent to which the director can make a vesting determination that is independently appealable, that is divorced from the larger project review process. I guess we'll have to agree to disagree on that point for purposes of tonight's proceeding. But fundamentally, what needs to occur procedurally is that a record must be created. If this matter, and it presumably will be, is ultimately appealed upward through the hearing examiner and then potentially to court after that, there must be a record made that establishes the factual basis for why particular determinations were made and how the commission reached its decision. This is really the opportunity to do that. So even though the director has indicated what his position on vesting is, I don't think that that's the end of the story. What needs to occur throughout this proceeding is the evidentiary gathering process, the elicitation of testimony, the presentation of written documents for your review, because all of that will form the bundle of materials that will form the closed record through which the hearing examiner and then the Superior Court will sit in judgment on this. Thank you.
May I speak? I apologize. I know things are coming at you from many directions here, but I feel obliged to point out that what Mr. Niven said is not only inconsistent with what I said about your authority, I believe it's inconsistent with what Mr. Lell said. You do not have the authority to second-guess the vesting issue. The code is clear, he has that authority, and his decision is not appealable to you. And it just muddies the waters hopelessly and makes this all much more difficult to suggest you think you have authority that I think Mr. Lell and I both agree that you don't have. So, you know, that is a fundamental problem with this, is all the confusion that is being generated by this process. Yes, a record has to be made, but the department has a very simple way of making the record. Mr. Niven can make his vesting determination if he says he hasn't done it yet, and I've heard two conflicting things from that side of the room, either it has been made or it hasn't been made. But there is a vesting determination in the staff report. If their position is that's not appealable to you all, and I think it has to be because that's what the code says, they can make it appealable to the hearing examiner by simply calling it a level zero, a level one decision, or by calling it a code interpretation. That sends it to the hearing examiner and not to you. And so this idea has just popped into my head as I've listened to this, but I think one of the alternatives you all ought to consider is making a recommendation to the hearing examiner that he make a decision that is appealable to the hearing examiner of this issue, so that the record is made in front of a body that can actually decide the issue. You could do that as a recommendation without actually exercising jurisdiction that you don't have, and that would get us out of this hopeless situation that we're finding ourselves in tonight.
So what's confusing to me is that you've already conceded that the proposals don't need, don't need the replacement regulations.
Right.
So it really, it really seems premature to move ahead on listening to the arguments whether they mean or don't mean, if you don't agree, don't be agreeing with what you have to comply with. So if you've already agreed to that it doesn't, that the vesting issue really becomes a significant one that, I'm still confused, but it doesn't sound like we have jurisdiction over it.
So I just asked for clarification. Has the hearing examiner already made a decision on the applicability of the vesting? Is that what this letter, I haven't had the time to read this entire letter.
No, that's a fair question. The short answer, Mr. Commissioners, no. The hearing examiner made a jurisdictional determination and concluded as part of the appeal decision that I handed out that the director's vesting determination, as expressed in the April 4th, 2018 letter, was not a final appealable decision over which the hearing examiner himself would have appellate jurisdiction. And it's staff's position that in the same manner, the staff report before you tonight is likely, it's not an independently appealable determination over which the hearing examiner has review authority. The hearing examiner has review authority over your decision. So when you make a final decision on a project permit application, that decision is properly appealable to the hearing examiner. And the record that the hearing examiner will review in conducting his or her appellate review is based on the record that's created before you as the commission. And I agree with Mr. Schneider, or at least I think, I empathize with his point, in that it's somewhat of a procedural, procedurally unique situation where you have to make a record on something for purposes of ultimately reaching a final decision. point, in that it's somewhat of a procedural, procedural, unique situation where you have to make a record on something for purposes of ultimately reaching a final decision, where the, the code indicates that that decision is supposed to have been made as part of this review for you by the director. The missing link, though, is that there's nothing in the code that allows Mr. Niven's staff report to be independently appealed upward. It's a, it's a recommendation. On its, on its face, the staff report is a recommendation to you. It doesn't do any, anything more than recommend to you how staff feels these project permits should ultimately be ruled upon. And again, in order to bring this up to the examiner and allow the examiner to review it in context, we need to make an evidentiary record here in this proceeding that will form the basis for future higher review.
So, if I may, of our counsel, then regarding the extent of that record, was it your recommendation to us that we not constrain testimony only to our usual purview of making our decision based on detail and technical constraints, the, essentially what you read from the code to us? Is it your advice to us that we do not attempt to constrain any hearing of this simply to those matters and exclude the substantive testimony that may take place over multiple weeks that may have to do with a vesting issue? Should we try to constrain it or not?
My recommendation would, too, be to allow each side to put information on the record that they would like to, to make. The decision that you make, though, can be based on portions of the record to the extent that you think it's within your jurisdiction to review and make a decision forward. But to, to limit or to control what people put into the record, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that at that, at this time.
Kind of just a follow-up question, too, just to go back to jurisdiction. Mr. Lell, on the, the hearing examiner, last page of the hearing examiner's decision on summary analysis, he also, he also states, it's the last sentence, that nothing in the development agreement grants the hearing, hearing examiner authority to settle disputes over interpretations of the development agreement itself, as is the case here. So, even, it seems to complicate the matter even more if there's a question about the hearing examiner's authority now to even hear an appeal of determination on vesting under the agreement.
So, I think that-
Then where does it go?
That's an excellent point, and I think that if, reading that statement in context, what the examiner was doing was construing not only the, the vesting component of Mr. Niven's April 4, 2018 letter, but also the, the balance of that document. And if you look at that, again, I believe that's Exhibit 10 of the staff report, a significant portion of the April 4 letter didn't address issues of vesting. Vesting was one issue that was addressed at the front of the letter, but then the letter went on to substantively address a series of, I believe, almost 20 alleged breaches of contract that IHIFC had notified the city of. And that, that was truly the thrust of that letter. And I believe that the, the hearing examiner statement that you're referring to, Mr. Commissioner, was in reference to those aspects of the April 4 letter that really were, were issues of contract dispute, and the examiner felt that he didn't have authority to do that. And I believe that was a correct determination.
Since I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. It's a question that, you brought up the idea that we would turn around and tell the city, well, we think this should be just a level zero review instead of a level three, but, Mr. Commissioner, is what, I don't understand what right we would have as a commission to say that a, a project is not at our level and remand it back to a lower level, is that-
I appreciate you asking the question, because I wanted to follow up on this. When I made that suggestion, Mr. Lell spoke, but he didn't respond to, he just kept saying, "Well, you have to make a record, and this is how we do it." But I didn't hear any response as to why the director couldn't make a level zero or a level one decision or a code interpretation that would be appealing. I'm not suggesting you have the authority to tell the director to do that, but I think you certainly have the authority to make the recommendation. And as a practical matter, I agree, this has all come up quickly. Even though the director's staff reports are dated last Monday, they weren't distributed until the end of the day on Wednesday. We've had very little time to prepare for this. I think it would be appropriate if you take things under advisement. My practical recommendation would be to make a recommendation to the staff, to maybe explain why they're not willing to make the vesting decision as a level zero or a level one or a code interpretation and get it resolved to the hearing examiner, why they're not willing to do that, and give that explanation to you in writing before the next hearing, and then we can take it up then. To me, again, this whole process was created out of whole cloth in, in August. We were told that the city would issue the vesting determinations in July or August. It didn't happen. We were suddenly told that we're not going to do that anymore, we're going to do this level three process. That is a recent invention. It's, it's a deliberate discretionary decision that the city is making, and they have the discretion to do it differently. So, why not ask them to explain in writing why they're not doing it differently? And then you can decide at the next meeting, you can go into executive session if you want to, because it, it is quasi-judicial, and then you can, in light of their response and an opportunity to us to briefly respond to it, then make a decision how you want to proceed.
I think that what's in front of us right now at this point is the question of what we do with the recommendation letter that came out today.
Right.
So, the, this letter, and it says, stay the hearing until the vesting issue was decided, but I haven't heard anything about, if that was the case, how else would it be decided? What else would be happening?
If I could, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Schneider can correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my interpretation of the letter that you received from the applicant's counsel today was essentially a, a request to stay these proceedings while the applicant attempts to appeal the staff report up to the hearing examiner. And that's, that's not so much, as I understand it, a, a determination of vesting in and of itself, it's really a, an issue of whether or not the examiner would have jurisdiction to consider an appeal of a staff report. Is that, is that consistent with your understanding, or did I mistake that?
Yeah, well, I don't know what he'd be doing. So, that's what, I guess what I was wondering, is what would be happening to resolve the issue.
And what I'm, my recent suggestion was a variation of what's in the letter, because Mr. Lell has made it clear he's going to say that we can't appeal to the hearing examiner. Fine, let's assume he's correct in that. Again, that begs the question of why the department won't make an appealable decision when they have the authority to do that. And what I'm asking you to do is to ask them to explain in writing why they won't make an appealable decision to the hearing examiner.
So, the hearing examiner, will they, he, she make a determination of vesting? Is, is that a decision that they will make?
So, I can't prospectively guesstimate what the hearing examiner will do. I haven't even seen the applicant's intended appeal of the staff report. My assumption is that Mr. Schneider is referring to a more intermediate step, which is that if this proceeding were to be stayed, and, and staff is not recommending that, but if that were to happen, and IHIFC were to attempt to appeal the staff report to the hearing examiner, and the city would then presumably bring a motion to dismiss that appeal for jurisdictional reasons in the same manner that it brought a motion successfully to dismiss the April 4, 2018 letter, that at that point, there would be some more formal resolution of the issue of whether or not at, at least the staff report is in fact an independently appealable determination. Staff doesn't believe that it is, the applicant feels otherwise. I believe that's the, the core of it.
So, it seems like we have an agenda, it doesn't have anything on it that talks about vesting. Decision on the adequacy of the proposals within our purview, whether they, whether they consist or not. It doesn't seem unreasonable to maybe consider to start the process of listening to the specific permit requests without talking about the vesting, and put that on the agenda for the next special meeting, and then have, have some additional dialogue over how we're going to resolve that vesting issue, if that makes sense.
Not sure that we would be discussing vesting, though.
No, my understanding is that that decision can only be made in response to our decision based on our ordinary purview, our ability to, to decide the merits of the applications on the basis of all the standards that we ordinarily use. I don't, since we can't make a decision on vesting, my understanding is that we go through that process and there is reportable information on which to make that decision.
So, it makes the most sense-
And ultimately-
It makes the most sense to go through the proposals, listen to the areas that we have jurisdiction over, and make a, make a decision on them.
That's my understanding, and yet we can't, it seems, or it is not advisable for us to try to limit discussion to those matters only. But we must make a recordable decision of some sort, it seems to me, before any decision can be made on vesting if it's to be challenged in the future.
Into the ques- yeah, I think so, and in terms of the question we're looking at right now, the proposal to stay the hearing, if, if we decide to do that, you think that both parties would have to stipulate that can be done at this meeting since it wasn't advertised?
Yeah, they would, yeah, I, I would recommend we treat this as a special meeting, meaning that you can't make a final action on something that's off the agenda, this is not listed on the agenda, unless both parties were essentially to, to stipulate that you would not be violating the Open Public Meeting Act if you chose to take action in response to this, this evening, as opposed to pushing that out to a future meeting where it is, you'd properly know this turns parts of your regular, it's a, a regular meeting. And, and you can also just, you can, you can ask the parties to essentially insulate you from making that, essentially stipulate that, that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and this is a quasi-judicial matter that you're taking up, or you can also just decide that you're going to not even ask the question and just continue on.
With a regular hearing.
With, with putting the decision that's on, or the, the motion that's on the table, putting that aside and making that decision at a future meeting, and then, so that would be step one. Then step two, what you want to do with the rest of this evening, continue, have the hearing as, as, as listed in the agenda, or continue the hearing if you decide that you'd like to wrap up for this evening and continue the hearing to another evening.
So, if we were going to continue the hearing and put the question of, questions raised in the letter we received today from Mr. Schneider on the agenda, I'm not clear about what our authority to decide that would be at a future meeting. I mean, what, what's the question we're responding to at the future meeting?
I feel like we're kind of in catch-22 here.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you've been asked, a motion's been raised as to whether you will stay this hearing. So, you can make it, so we're talking about a future, just, future meeting, you can decide to rule on that motion, and also decide, there's, there's proceedings where, in, in this type of a context where some bodies will go through the whole hearing and wait to decide, well, you wouldn't be able to wait to decide on the motion to stay, but you could also sort of put this jurisdictional question to the end at the hearing and make a decision on that essentially procedural question about whether or not you had jurisdiction here until the end of your decision and wrap that all together. So, you've got some flexibility there. I, you do actually, I guess, need to make a decision at some point as to whether you're going to grant the motion to stay, do something with the stay. But the jurisdictional question, you could decide to continue through the end of the, here, going through the motion of a public hearing to take all the evidence, and then making your decision about jurisdiction at the end of all that as part of your decision on the, the application.
So, what the chair was suggesting is that we begin the process of just taking evidence tonight for some period of time, to begin the process, put on the agenda the question about jurisdictional authority for deciding this at a future meeting.
But not jurisdictional authority, but just the decision to stay our hearing, right?
Yeah, that, that at a minimum, you probably ought to do, otherwise you're continuing with the hearing and you're not making a decision on that, right?
But, but, I'm going to slow, it's been a long day. So, if we don't have jurisdictional authority to decide on the question of vesting, what's in front of us?
The decision, the decision to stay the hearing.
But then what happens?
Oh, if he, I'm sorry.
If we stay them, if we, the question of vesting is what's raised. So, you know, for now, it's just a question, do we stay the hearing? Right, if we stay the hearing, for what purpose?
That's what I was asking about, what would be the, how long would-
They've already, the, the motion on the table is to stay the proceeding because you don't have jurisdiction to hear this, to, to go forward with this proceeding. You could, you could decide to, you can actually respond to this in multiple ways when you get to that point, to say, "We're not going to stay the proceeding, but we're also not going to make a jurisdictional determination of whether or not we can make a decision here until we've gone through the public hearing," which is effectively your jurisdiction to hear, or to make a decision, to not to hear, but to, to, to make a decision on the applications that are put before you because there's a question of vesting. So, there are multiple ways to review this, and that's, that's something that you're entitled to continue to discuss and make a decision on at a future meeting.
So, we could continue with the hearing, putting this off until it's fully noticed and everything for the next meeting?
That would be my recommendation. I would agree. Because by staying it- Can you speak up just a little bit? Sorry, I would agree.
So, do we need to do that parliamentary-wise? Do we need to make a call to do that?
Well, you can, you, so your agenda at this point, which we're technically still on one, and remembering that you can't make any final actions off of this agenda, you, as the chair, could decide to proceed with the agenda? If, if that's the-
And as part of that, we would have to say we want this to be added to the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, however, normally, it's, it's, your, your agenda is developed, I, I apologize, I don't know function, but yeah, you can put it on the record that-
This is a new one for us, too.
Yeah, say that you'll, that you'll, that you'll, that you'll put this motion for a stay on the agenda for the next meeting, yes, you could, you could, you could decide that as a group, if that's what you want to do right now.
Can I address this procedural issue?
Please, please speak up on the other part here.
I, if you decide to proceed with the other items on the agenda, then I believe you are acting outside your jurisdiction because the, the only issue is the vested issue, nothing else is a dispute, and you will be proceeding to take evidence in effect on the issue over which I don't believe you have jurisdiction. So, my, again, all I can do is make suggestions to you, which you're free to reject, but again, my suggestion is that you don't proceed with the agenda items until you make a decision on this motion, or in the alternative, that you consider my recommendation, that you ask the department to explain in writing why they won't make an appealable decision on the vesting issue and take this entire issue away from you so you don't have to wrestle with it. And I also would just say, you know, I, again, recognize, we've given you a lot and very little time to consider. My suggestion would be wait and make any decision until the next meeting. Schedule this as soon as you can, but not make a decision tonight, because if you decide to go ahead, then we have to say we're proceeding under protest because we don't think you have jurisdiction. And if you want additional briefing from me or from Mr. Lell, ask for it, but be fully informed before you decide to go ahead.
Oh, we do, we do have the jurisdiction to make a decision on the adequacy of the proposals.
Yes.
My proposal.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure how we might end the process by- So I'm not sure how we pilot the process by going ahead and listening to the discussion of each one of these building proposals.
If, if you want to limit the hearing so that that's all you're going to take evidence on, and you don't allow us to make evidence on the vesting issue, then you can go ahead and do that. We can be done tonight because we don't dispute that we don't comply with replacement regulations. So we can have the hearing over and done with tonight, but you need to tell us you're not going to make, let us make a record on that issue. Otherwise, we have to make the record and this is going to go on.
Right, I think our counsel already said we're not in a very good position to limit the information we provide. So, so I'm kind of thinking we'd be ill advised to make that decision.
No, again, I can't, you need to listen to your counsel, not to me on that issue. But again, the, I, I continue to say, suggest that this entire dilemma is unnecessary. It can be avoided by the department exercising the discretion it has to make appealable decisions. By refusing to do that, they are basically continuing the problem that has been in place since last April.
So may I just ask the question, in the view of the city then, why is this appropriate as a level three review? I think we know what the position is, but I would like to understand.
Absolutely, and the short answer, Mr. Commissioner, with all respect, is that the city doesn't make that determination. The code, which is a policy document that has been adopted formally by the Isipua City Council, has made that decision for us. As much as I would prefer to probably spend my Wednesday nights elsewhere instead of going through a lengthy quasi judicial proceeding, the Isipua City Code designates this proceeding, these types of land use permits within the Isipua Highlands, as being a level three process that require a level three development commission review with a pre-decisional hearing. You're the only body that has jurisdiction to do that. And while, again, the vesting determination is supposed to be made in concert or in conjunction with your larger permit review proceeding by the, the Development Services Director, this is our one opportunity to make a record on everything. I'm sorry if I keep repeating myself again, I do think that bears emphasis.
In the staff report, that's on page seven of 307 in 3A. That explicitly, then, clarification of why this is level three according to code.
Yes, sir.
Just a question for you. I think a lot in terms of precedence of what we do with other projects and thinking about if somebody came to us with a project that would qualify as a level three review, and we turned around as the body that's supposed to hold the public hearing, and we said, no, we're, we think that should just be pushed down to a level zero and the city should decide that. I don't think we could do that because then that doesn't allow the public to have their input on a project, right? We would be abdicating our duties as a development condition.
I would say that based on the, the code provisions that I listed there, your, your, as a, in your role in receiving a site development permit, application is to decide whether or not that meets the criteria applicable to that application or not. Not to decide what process or level of review is applicable to that, that provision per se.
Yeah.
Of course, we have an interesting situation here because what's essentially being presented is that the analogous of, this is supposed to be a level zero or a level three. Well, we, different, you know, these standards apply versus these standards apply.
Right, but we don't have the right to say it should be zero, not three.
That, that, in terms of what the authority is that you've been given under the code, you know, specific, determining which process is applicable as opposed to what criteria, really speaks to the criteria, you need to decide if the applications are consistent with the criteria that are, that are specified in the code.
Do you guys want this on the record? You have to speak up.
But, again, like a master site, I remember where we've made a recommendation.
We're, we're talking about whether we've ever passed, passed back, or recommend, passed up or down the jurisdiction on who's supposed to make the decision. I recall there was a time when we, we said we didn't think it was our decision to make. We were told that it was, and so then we, amazing to see. I'm sorry. So I'm still a little stuck with, I guess, overall, it sounds like we're kind of in a conundrum of having to make a decision on whether we want to go ahead with the public hearings or not. Without going ahead with, with the public hearings, a decision is not going to be made that's appealable. Developer wants, wants a decision made so that they can file an appropriate appeal to the hearing examiner. So I, I feel compelled and stuck with the notion of having to sit here and listen to the, to app, to hold the public hearing on these buildings and get that stuff entered into the record, get, get the information material into the record. Our counsel is saying we're not going to try to constrain what is discussed. So we don't, no, we don't have to. So what, what I think we need to do is move ahead on the public hearing. I think we need to table the discussion, not make a decision on the proposal or, I'm not using the right term. The motion to stay, get that on the agenda for our next special meeting and have some dialogue over that if we need to. But I think we need to move forward on listening to the, the recommendations of the three buildings, the three proposal buildings.
I agree.
Agreed.
Proceeding with the hearing?
Yep, just proceed. So Beam, see where we get tonight.
Beam, it's a little warm in this room and maybe nobody else would like to stand up for five minutes. I wouldn't mind standing up for five minutes and just clearing, getting my head clear a little bit. So if you're all okay with, well, I'm going to give you a five minute break. You can sit if you want, stand up, jump, jumping jacks, however you want. Let's resume back in. So I appreciate you handling me and wanting me to stand up a little bit. Appreciate you coming back. I think we're going to start listening to, opening the public hearing on the Isipua Highlands retail site development permit queue. As noted in the agenda, we are going to be seeking public input, but the public testimony portion of the public hearing is anticipated to occur at a future date. So we will be asking for that. I'd also recommend that since all of us probably are working in class and we don't go past nine thirty, so just accept the fact that at nine thirty we're going to call a halt to the proceedings. So, let's proceed. And we're going to include on the agenda, thank you. We're going to include at our next special meeting an agenda item to talk about the motion. And what I would like in advance is for the parties to, if they are willing, they don't have to, but if they're willing to, help us better understand what, what the issue is and why the positions are taken that are being taken. If they could give us a written explanation of that and give it to us a couple of days before the meeting so we'd have a chance to be able to really understand it. Because I'll just be honest, getting it the day of the meeting is just really difficult. I don't, I didn't even look at my email until like five o'clock tonight, so a little behind time, so, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since what has been presented to you as of this morning from Mr. Schneider is essentially in the nature of a motion, my request and proposal would be that the city have an opportunity to respond to that. That's, that's really what's on the table. And if IHIC doesn't object to that, my request would be to have the opportunity to respond in writing in the same essential manner as the applicant has done within some reasonable opportunity for the applicant for, to have a brief reply in writing and to have some parameters established for that in terms of page length limits and timing of submittals so we're all clear about the ground rules.
Does that sound agreeable?
Yes, I, I agree completely. And my suggestion would be that we, that you determine when the next meeting will be and then we work back from that and give us the deadlines.
I would concur.
So, when, so now, do you want that, how do we?
So the next meeting is October twenty fourth.
So the, maybe on the third is.
For another topic.
Another topic.
So October twenty fourth is the next meeting?
This topic.
This topic.
And the seventeenth is never.
Seventeenth didn't, it's a, we're, the seventeenth was not available, you know.
So, so would it be reasonable to get the written comment by the seventeenth? Or, or the city's, the city's response to the motion for the twenty fourth meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, close of business on the seventeenth.
So the packets get put together before then?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't have time to respond, so maybe we have to go.
The meeting on the twenty fourth?
So.
So seventeenth is fine.
Could the materials be forwarded to the commissioners outside the packet just in the way of general submittal? And then made available.
The question is whether they're made available to the parties of record public all at the same time. Question.
Who does that need to be by for the twenty fourth meeting?
The packet. So we like to give you a week for the packet and then I like to give support services a day to get that out.
So the packet would be a week before?
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth. What Lucy's saying is we would need to have any documents for that packet on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth. Sixteenth. So if we.
So what, the question though that I think we're answering is we would be able to provide that information to the commission as part of the packet distribution, which would happen one week prior to the next commission meeting related to this topic, which would be the seventeenth.
Right, so if you have it by the sixteenth then.
Right, so the question.
Our internal mechanics are relevant to you guys.
Two documents here that we're talking about. We're talking about the response to the motion and then an opportunity for a brief response to the response. So we've got two documents that we're trying to coordinate here. And adequate time to actually produce those. So given the city till the end of the week, October fifth.
That'd be next week.
Right, that's right, end of next week to respond and then, actually, take it, take that back, give to like the tenth, so the tenth of October. And then there would be, until the fifteenth would be the response to make sure there's adequate time for processing the documents with the city to get them in the packet by the sixteenth.
I don't agree to that yet. Because we're in Budton, I'm like knee deep in Budton, so. So, council member or commission member, what were you suggesting? The city's response would be the tenth?
Yes.
So that would be two weeks from today.
The applicant time to respond by the sixteenth.
And then.
Applicant's response to the city by the six, by the fifteenth or sixteenth, whatever is needed for publication.
Okay.
Mr. Schneider, is that?
I would request, if they need it by the sixteenth, that we be given a deadline on the sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
So the sixteenth would need to be, if we're going to get that information out to the commission, the sixteenth, we would need it in the morning?
So before noon?
Sounds like it. So we'll get a city response by the tenth, the applicant by the morning of the sixteenth.
A little set of time.
The sixteenth by noon, I would suggest.
End of the day on the tenth.
Is that right?
I'm trying to.
Close of business on the tenth.
Yes, sir.
The city response will be due the tenth, close of business the tenth. The applicant's, the applicant's response will be the sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could also make a request that the commission impose some reasonable page limits on these submittals just so the process does not get too out of hand. I don't want to cast dispersions, I just know how sometimes these submittals can.
What would you consider reasonable?
I would suggest a five page limit for the city's response and a three page limit for the reply.
Five and three?
Yes, sir.
That's acceptable.
Thank you.
So I think at this point, we're ready to proceed with the.
Specify the font size here.
That was my next motion.
I need to clearly state that we are participating under protest in the public hearing on this, for the reasons set forth in the letter and in the discussion this evening.
Mr. Chairman, we do have the staff level one additional procedural point. During the past couple of weeks, we've been attempting to reach a stipulation with the applicant and their legal counsel regarding the format for tonight's proceeding. And jointly or independently reviewing the code, it, it was determined that the IMC doesn't really contain particularly clear procedural strictures for a format of this type. And I had prepared with, in consultation with the applicant, a proposed stipulation regarding the order of presentation, the time and extent for producing evidence, et cetera. Mr. Schneider can speak to the point, but I believe that the applicant declined at the end to, to ultimately execute that stipulation while their motion for the stay was pending. So we haven't been able to come to a formal agreement. And in lieu of that, what I have done is prepare a unilateral proposal based on the exact same substance of our original proposed stipulation regarding the procedural format. And I've already provided a, a copy of this to Mr. Schneider at the commencement of tonight's hearing. And with your leave, I would like to pass it out for the commission's consideration. Thank you. It's very basic, as you can see, it just provides some general parameters regarding the order of presentation and the extent to which the parties can produce evidence.
Here's one question would be the item for public testimony. Typically, if I understand this right, we close public testimony and after that, there's no more public testimony that can come in. But then there would be rebuttal witnesses and applicant witnesses that would come after that? So I'm wondering, is that an issue if witnesses come after the public testimony and the public doesn't have a chance to respond?
And I, I appreciate the question, I think it's a valid point. I believe that, that was a, a point of at least conceptual agreement with the applicant's legal counsel. And the reason for proposing the format and the presentation order in that way was to ensure that the rights of the applicant are actually protected, that the public will get its bite at the apple, have an opportunity to comment based on the primary witnesses that have provided testimony. But then, at the very end of the proceeding, there will be at least a brief opportunity for both the applicant and the city to comment on the comments that the public itself had, had provided. Keeping in mind that the purpose of this proceeding is to essentially review and sit in judgment on the applicant's project. So the applicant should, I think in fairness, get an opportunity to respond at the end of the proceeding based on all the other comment that has been received during the course of the hearing.
I may respond to that. The fundamental problem we have is that public testimony is not appropriate for a quasi judicial proceeding. It's entirely appropriate for what you normally. It's entirely appropriate for what you normally do, which is, you know, deal with design issues and that sort of thing. But the, the issue on which you're going to be taking testimony, depending, I suppose, on the outcome of what you decide at the next meeting. But on the issue of vested rights, that is a quasi-judicial proceeding, we need to make a quasi-judicial record and public testimony is not appropriate in that context. So, we object to the public testimony on the vested rights issue. If you are going to allow it, then I agree that Mr. Lowens put it in the right place in the agenda. But I don't think it should be part of the vested rights issue at all.
Here's one question, I don't know that we've ever had the ability to tell somebody from the public what they can or can't say. Just like to, we limited them to a time period, but... Right. So, just maybe, can I ask a follow-up, clarify a question? As far as after the public testimony, the, the additional evidence that will be presented will be, there won't be new evidence, it will be rebuttal evidence to, to witnesses or statements or information that has already been submitted?
It, yes, that's the nature of rebuttal evidence. It's supposed to respond to something that has previously been presented.
Then the question is about the back and forth that we would, I'm just thinking about our typical public hearings and public input where we take the public testimony. They raise issues, we raise, ask questions, et cetera, sometimes on behalf of the public.
After we close the public hearing?
And then we make a decision. So I don't know that this is too far astray from that. And I think the question before us a bit is if we're dealing with questions about vesting, um, it's more of a procedural and less of a community impact question about design ability, et cetera. So the relevance might be a little different. I think we're okay with this, this order of business. Okay. Commission?
I'm okay with it.
All right. So let's, uh, I, I think we'll adopt this as, uh, as an order of business on how we conduct, uh, our, our meeting. So, uh, yeah, we did dealt with the, uh, manner and?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So staff presentation?
Thank you. Again, Zach Lill on behalf of the Development Services Department. Um, I will be fairly brief in my opening comments because I think much of the relevant issues before you have been addressed during the preliminary discussions tonight.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt, but one thing, you mentioned the appearance of fairness disclosures, which at our meetings is typically brought up by staff. And we want to go through that to make sure that we have that covered. We know what it is, but Lucy, you typically, at these hearings, will remind us of that.
And you asked an important question, right?
Yeah.
Lucy pulled that out.
Now she has to find it. Thanks.
So I will skip the introduction and just say that this, please review the first set of questions. And once you've reviewed those questions, I will ask for your responses. How many commissioners would indicate no to all questions? Any yeses? Okay, then, um, have there been any ex parte contacts?
No.
No. Is there a challenge from the applicant?
I'd just like to clarify that given the nature of the proceeding, ex parte contacts would include contacts with staff regarding this issue. As long as that's the question to respond to, then we don't have any issues.
Do you need to amend your answers regarding any contacts with staff?
They've been more than quick to remind us that they can't have any communication with us on this.
I'm sorry, I still didn't hear.
They've been more than quick to remind us that they can't speak to this with us. I get, if, and, and these gentlemen are fairly knowledgeable, I inadvertently would ask a question and then say, well, we can't answer that. Staff presentation?
Thank you, sir. As the commission is aware, the purpose of this hearing is to review and evaluate three project permit applications that have been submitted by the applicant, IHIFC, uh, for various development proposals located within the Issaquah Highlands area. In the context of this hearing, as has been discussed, is somewhat unusual in that the typical land use hearing involves potentially a dispute over how particular zoning regulations are applied and which conditions of approval are appropriate. But here, the dispute is primarily over which set of regulations should govern the proceeding and which set of standards should be used to evaluate the regulatory compliance of the permit applications that have been submitted. And there are three permit applications before you tonight, two administrative site development permits, or ASTPs, and one site development permit, or SDP. These applications were submitted under the auspices of development agreement that formerly covered the Issaquah Highlands and was originally executed and recorded against the Issaquah Highlands area in nineteen ninety-six. We refer to it throughout the proceeding as the, uh, the nineteen ninety-six development agreement or simply the development agreement. That agreement had a build-out period that ended in September of two thousand and seventeen. Subsequently, the Issaquah City Council, as was always intended under the development agreement, adopted an ordinance in March of two thousand and eighteen, ordinance number twenty-eight thirty, which enacted a series of replacement regulations to govern future development within the Issaquah Highlands. Those replacement regulations are now codified at chapter eighteen nineteen B of the Issaquah Municipal Code. And the fundamental dispute between the parties in this proceeding is which body of standards, which regulations should be used to evaluate the three ASTPs and SDPs that are before you. And for several reasons, uh, as explained in the staff report and will be further enunciated during the, the, uh, the hearing testimony, it is staff's strong belief and position that the development agreement standards are inapplicable to these three permit applications. And instead, these permit applications should be reviewed under the recently enacted replacement regulations that are now codified in the Issaquah Municipal Code. I think to set the table for the staff testimony that will, will be shortly, uh, received by the commission, I'd like to, to note for the, the commission's edification that there are generally three ways by which a, a project permit application or vesting can occur at, at the local land use level. The first and most basic type of vesting occurs when a, a project applicant submits a fully complete subdivision application or preliminary plat application or a building permit application. And both of those types of vesting are established by state statute, RCW fifty-eight seventeen oh thirty-three for plats and RCW nineteen twenty-seven oh ninety-five for building permits. And there are different vesting rules that apply for each of those statutes. But neither one of those vesting mechanisms is applicable here because what's before you tonight is not a plat and it's not a building permit. It is instead a series of site development permits. And Washington case law could not be clearer that site development permits do not trigger vested rights. There are at least two expressed decisions of the Washington appellate courts that have established binding precedent on that point. And the most recent vesting case law in Washington has clarified unequivocally that unless the particular type of vesting at issue is specifically codified in the revised code of Washington, that it does not exist anymore. And therefore, site development permits do not vest under state law. That's the first category of vesting. The second category of vesting is a more nuanced approach. And that occurs if there was, for example, a preliminary plat that was fully complete, a, a plat application that was fully complete and submitted to the city. And that plat application went into such significant detail regarding the applicant's future development plans that it essentially defines precisely what the applicant wants to do in the future on that piece of property, that property for which a preliminary plat has been submitted. And this type of vesting is based on a relatively famous or seminal Washington Supreme Court case called Noble Manor versus Pierce County. And the rule that came out of Noble Manor versus Pierce County is that what is vested is what is shown on the plat. So for example, if a plat applicant goes beyond the usual approach of simply drawing a few lines on a map and indicating how a particular piece of property is going to be divided into future lots and goes one step further than that and actually shows building footprints on that plat application. Well, if those building footprints indicate a particular setback between the edge of the building and a lot line, what the city cannot do after that point is adopt a new setback requirement that's different than that, that would, that would be violated by that plat and then apply those new setback regulations against the applicant because the applicant is vested to what he or she showed on the face of his or her plat. But that didn't occur here either. IHIFC did submit a plat application to the city in August of two thousand and seventeen during the build-out period of the development agreement. But that plat did not show building footprints. That plat gave a very general description about what the applicant intended to do on the subject property and therefore, the Noble Manor versus Pierce County type of vesting that I've just described doesn't apply in this situation. The third type of vesting under Washington law is vesting through a development agreement. And this is a fundamentally different type of vesting because it doesn't really rely on state law standards or case law or precedent or anything. It is basically determined by what the parties themselves have contractually agreed to through their development agreement. And instead of looking to some different body of case law or statute, how you determine vesting under a development agreement is to look at what the language of the development agreement says about vesting. And that, I think, is really the source of the primary dispute between city staff and the applicant in this case. It is how the nineteen ninety-six development agreement's vesting provision should be construed in relation to the three ASTP and SDP applications that are before you. And the evidence will show, I think it's fairly clear, and I don't know that they can reasonably be disputed, that IHIFC's site development permit applications were submitted after the build-out period of the development agreement. They were submitted in the fall of two thousand and seventeen after the nineteen ninety-six development agreement's build-out period had already expired. And if you read the vesting clause, the one provision of the development agreement that purports to address vesting, it's in section three point two-three of the agreement. I strongly encourage the commissioners to look at that very carefully because that, I think, is the linchpin of this proceeding. The only reference to anything vesting related in that section says by its terms that the city is prohibited from imposing different regulations or new regulations or modifying its regulations during the build-out period. And the obvious corollary to that statement is that once the build-out period is ended, the city isn't constrained at all from adopting new regulations and it isn't constrained at all from applying and enforcing those new regulations. And that's precisely what the city of Issaquah did through its adoption of ordinance number twenty-eight thirty on March nineteenth of this year, the ordinance that adopted the replacement regulations. Those are the new regulations that were, by their terms, intended to replace the standards that are contained in the nineteen ninety-six development agreement. All of the applicants, all the landowners had twenty years plus to file applications and develop their property under the auspices of that agreement and the twenty-year build-out period that was established underneath it. And IHIFC didn't do that with respect to its SDP and ASTP applications. They submitted a preliminary plat that didn't show building footprints, but they didn't submit their SDP and ASTPs until after the build-out period ended. So in staff's view, they are fully subject to the replacement regulations. And if there was any doubt about that, if there was any reasonable doubt, and there really shouldn't be, after reviewing that provision of the development agreement, I would respectfully direct your attention to the clause that immediately follows them. And that is section three point two, point three, point two. And that provision expressly governs situations like this one where an applicant submits project permit applications after the build-out period of the development agreement has expired but bef- before the new replacement regulations have come into being, while the agreement is technically in effect. And what that provision says by its terms is that the development standards of the agreement continue to govern that situation. But, any party can then provide notice under the agreement of termination and then when that happens, that section refers you to a different section of the development agreement, section five point one-three. And if you read that all the way through, the linchpin, the, the absolutely dispositive provision that should govern this proceeding says at the very end that once the city council adopts the replacement regulations, they govern. They govern immediately. It doesn't purport to reach back in time and rescue or save or, or grant vested rights to previously submitted permit applications. It doesn't say that at all. It simply says, "The new regulations shall govern." Period. And that's why I think despite all of the lengthy dispute and the mounds of paper that have been generated throughout the course of the city's dealings with the applicant on this point, that the vesting issue here is actually very simple. It's a basic question of contract interpretation regarding a clause in the agreement that in staff's view is clear on its face, on its intent and in its effect. So, moving forward with the permission of the commission, I would like to proceed by calling a, a few city witnesses. I don't believe that we'll be able to get through, um, too much testimony tonight, but the city's first witness is Development Services Director Keith Niven. Niven?
I'm going to come up here, Commissioner, so I can actually see you all.
Thank you. Could you please state your full name for the record?
Uh, sure. My name is, uh, Keith Wayne Niven.
What is your official title and position for the city of Issaquah?
Uh, I am the director of the city's economic development department as well as the city's development services department.
You also the city's SIP official?
Yeah.
How long have you held the positions that you just referenced?
Uh, so economic development director since two thousand and twelve, uh, development services director since two thousand and fifteen.
In your position, do you have ultimate supervisory authority over the city of Issaquah's development services department?
I do.
Does your supervisory authority include the city's permit center?
It does.
How long have you worked for the city?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we're doing this as a quasi-judicial proceeding, I think the witnesses need to be put under oath.
City has no objection to that, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
The witnesses should be put under oath. They should attest that they are going to tell the truth under penalty of perjury.
Okay. And you agree with that?
We would stipulate to that and I, typically it's the city clerk. I, I don't believe that I'm avail, available, able to, uh, to administer oaths. Court reporter may. Mr. Niven, are you the city's highest official with interpretive authority with respect to the city's development regulations as codified in the Issaquah Municipal Code?
Yes.
Do you have personal knowledge of the subject matter of tonight's hearing, specifically the? the 1996 Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, the city's promulgation and adoption of the replacement regulations for the Issaquah Highlands area that were enacted under ordinance number 2830, the development of the Issaquah Highlands area under the 1996 Development Agreement, and the submittal processing and evaluation of IHIFC's various land use applications?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you a series of questions now concerning procedural issues that have been implicated in tonight's hearing. Were you present for Mr. Schneider's statements throughout tonight's proceedings?
Yes, I was.
Did you personally read the motion for stay that Mr. Schneider submitted on behalf of the applicant IHIFC dated today's date?
I briefly read it this morning, yes.
I'd like to call your attention first to section 1801.050 of the Issaquah Municipal Code. Are you familiar with this provision?
Which subsection of, or the whole?
The whole thing.
Yes.
Could you please read aloud subsection A of 1801.050?
Sure. It's, I don't, authority, unless otherwise noted in this code, Development Services Department Director or his or her designee shall be responsible for administering this code. The Development Services Director or his or her designee shall have the authority to interpret this code. Anyone may request an interpretation of this code by filing a written request with the permit center. The Development Services Director or his or her designee shall respond in writing to all requests for a code interpretation. Clarifying language of one interpretation of this code may be used for another interpretation of this code.
Thank you, Mr. Niven. To your knowledge, has IHIFC ever submitted a request for an interpretation of the code to the permit center under the authority of this provision?
Not to my knowledge.
In your official interpretation of the Issaquah Municipal Code, is a request to confirm or otherwise determine the vested status of a project application a request for an interpretation of the code within the meaning of IMC 1801.050?
Can you say that again, please?
Do you believe that a request to confirm or determine the vested status of a particular project application, is that the same thing as a request for an interpretation of the code? Could you please read aloud subsection C of 1801.050?
The whole thing?
Just the preface statement, please.
Okay. It says vested rights, nothing in this chapter shall be interpreted to require an applicant to obtain approval of any other permit or approval from the city prior to applying for a building permit. All city determinations regarding vesting shall be made only by the Development Services Director in consultation with city attorney.
In your official interpretation of that code section, is the director's, quote, "determination regarding vested rights," end quote, intended to be formatted as a standalone, independently, and separately appealable administrative decision?
I do not believe so, as written.
Is that a determination of that type simply the director's direction as to which set of local regulations will be applied to the city's processing in review or evaluation of a particular project proposal, with the ultimate decision then being made by the final decision-maker on the permit?
I'm objecting that these are leading questions, which are inappropriate for someone asking questions of his own witness. The question should be open-ended, not directing the witness to a specific response.
With respect to two responses. First of all, is I believe the commission is aware strict rules of evidence don't apply in local land use proceedings of this type. Second, a leading question basically answers its own question, and that's not what the questions that have been posed to Mr. Niven attempt to do. And I believe that this is a clearly relevant topic. In fact, it's the basis of the dispute between the parties, and I would respectfully request the opportunity to continue questioning Mr. Niven.
I'm not suggesting it's not relevant, but I'm suggesting that, in effect, we're having Mr. Lell testify and not the witness. So, I, again, you don't have rules of procedure, but I think the questions are unnecessarily leading, and that the witness should be asked to give his opinion, not confirm whether he agrees with Mr. Lell's opinion.
Oh, this is no man's land. This is, this is decision-free, decision-making, bar aside, if you would like to ask the city attorney to revise how he's asking the questions or not on the basis of the objection of...
Typically, in our hearings, we don't have a question-answer. It's not a judicial proceeding. We get a presentation made to us to consider evidence. We don't limit what applicants say during, and so...
I can understand the position of wanting to hear Mr. Niven's answers, and so if there's a way to ask questions that don't appear as leading, that would be beneficial.
Thank you. I will try to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
So, I'll try to rephrase that, Mr. Niven, in light of the commission's direction. When you, as a director, make a determination regarding the vesting status of a particular project application under subsection C of 1801.050 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, in your experience or intent or belief, is that an independently appealable determination? Or does any appeal of your determination have to wait until the underlying project permit has reached a final decision?
So, I think, again, as I responded earlier, I, you know, that decision doesn't happen typically. What happens is, I mean, if you, if you think about the staff reports that come before you from staff, and you think about, you pull the last 50 that we've given you, you're not going to see a section on vested rights. It's just not there. And part of that is, we determine what regulations apply to applications, and we provide our staff reports in response to that. In this particular case, the applicant doesn't agree with the regulations we believe are applicable to their permits. And so, a vested decision, again, as part of the normal land use process, is not evident in part of the land use process. It's there if you look at what regulations staff would apply, because we're adopting new regulations all the time related to different things within the city, right? And so, part of it is, we then apply those regulations to applications, and there's a decision that's been made about what applies to each application. Typically, that's not pulled out as a separate decision as part of the process.
In your experience as the director and working with the city, are you aware of any situation in which your vesting determination regarding a particular project application was independently appealed to the hearing examiner or some other authority before a final decision on the project application was made?
None that I can recall. Thank you.
Please turn to IMC 1803.070, A1. Scroll down. Could you please read aloud, actually, just to save time, could you just review that, please? A, subsection A?
Yeah.
Okay. And can you scroll down on the screen to reach the end of it?
Okay.
So, in the enumerated list of administrative actions for which you, as the director, are granted by this section of the code, the authority to make final decisions, which I believe is the wording of the ordinance, are any of those that are options that are listed, do any of them encompass a vesting determination, in your view, under 1801.050C?
So, the list one through seven that's part of that section does not indicate vesting as a separate item.
Thank you. Are you aware of...
I'm sure that he's cutting off his own witness's testimony. I think the witness should be allowed to complete an answer.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done, Keith.
But, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, vested, the decision about vested rights is somewhat in every land use permit decision that's made. I mean, you look at things like, all of these things have regulations tied to them, and those regulations can change based on city council action. Our decision would have to have an understanding of what regulations apply to each one of those.
I understand that. I just want to have you clarify that of the list of items that are designated under this section of the code as being matters for which you have ultimate final decision authority, starting with number one, an administrative site development permit.
Right.
Generally, do you have authority over that?
Through this section of code, yes.
But, for example, under a site development permit submitted under the auspices of the Issaquah Highlands replacement regulations, would you have authority over that?
I do not, because that's a different section of city code applies to that geography.
Thank you. And for an administrative adjustment of standards, is that the same thing as a vesting determination?
No.
Is a shoreline substantial development permit under subsection three, would a vesting determination fall under the auspices of that?
As, as I described earlier, codes, codes represent a certain point in time, and they're static until they change. You know, the idea of vested rights, you know, would apply to every application potentially, right? And so, shoreline and shoreline exemptions are about request to do something within the shoreline, and it's reviewed against a code that's in place, right? It has, it is, it is not specifically a vested rights application, but does it potentially apply? Sure. It does everything.
Okay. Could you please go now to IMC 1819B.040? This is the interpretive provision of the replacement regulations. Are you familiar with this section?
Yeah.
Drawing your attention to the provision of this code that specifically authorizes the, a party to file a request for an interpretation of this code by filing a written request to the permit center, do you see that in the middle of the paragraph, beginning with the word "anyone"?
Yes.
Has IHIFC, to your knowledge, ever submitted a request for an interpretation of the code as referenced in this provision to the permit section, or, excuse me, to the permit center under the authority of this IMC provision?
Not to my knowledge.
In your capacity as director, have you ever issued a standalone separately appealable determination regarding the vested status of a project application? Thank you. Are you aware of any of your predecessors or designees ever having issued a standalone, separately appealable determination to that effect?
Not to my knowledge.
In your official interpretation of the Issaquah Municipal Code, does the code contain any provision that would authorize you, as the director, to issue a standalone separately appealable determination regarding the vested status of a project application?
I'm not sure I'm ready to answer that question.
Thank you. We can come back to that. Okay. In your official interpretation of the Issaquah Municipal Code, does the Development Commission have the exclusive authority under the code to issue final decisions on IHIFC's ASTP and SDP applications?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Why would you say that itself?
Because it's identified as a level-three review, because they are on a major street that was identified in the replacement regulations as qualifying as a level-three.
And that was my last question, but just to confirm that, in your interpretation of the code, are IHIFC's ASTP and SDP applications subject to level-three review? Thank you. I'd like to ask you now questions regarding the 1996 Development Agreement. Could you please describe the history and purpose of that contract in general terms?
Sure. So, the development agreement was executed between the city and Grand Glacier Partnership more than 20 years ago. Unfortunately, I've been here for 20 years, you're related me. And it was to guide the development on property that was at the time outside of city jurisdiction. So, it was actually a development agreement and annexation agreement. There was a three-party agreement with the city and King County and, I'm going to use Port Blakely, it was legally, they were Grand Glacier Partnership, to, to guide that development. So, brought it into the urban area, annexed it to the city, and the development agreement then provided a, a, a contract by which the developer could then build out the project.
Okay. Could you describe or define the build-out period under the agreement, what, what the purpose and effect of that was?
Sure. So, the purpose of the build-out period was, you know, part of a development agreement is to provide predictability for a property owner. Typically, there's some significant, either infrastructure improvements or other costs associated with doing those. And so, the, the purpose of, of the 20-year build-out period for Issaquah Highlands was to give the property owner a reasonable expectation to then recoup investments on the property. And with Issaquah Highlands, it wasn't just major infrastructure, but it was also the provision of a significant amount of open space. And so, it gave them time to then recoup their investment costs through the sale of property to builders.
When did the build-out period expire?
So, the build-out period expired in September of 17.
Have you read section 3.23 of the Development Agreement?
I have.
Could you read aloud the third sentence of that provision?
Of 323...
Yeah, Lucy would probably need to scroll up just a little bit.
Third sentence you said, or third line, what, what did you ask for?
The third sentence of section 3.23, beginning with the words "during" the build-out period.
During the build-out period, the city shall not modify or impose new or additional development standards beyond those set forth in this agreement.
Do you construe this reference as meaning that the city is prohibited from applying...
Objection. It's a leading question. The question should be, how do you construe this, not do you construe it in the way that he's suggesting?
Sorry.
Can you rephrase your question?
How do you construe this, this provision, Mr. Niven, in relation to the concept of vested rights under the agreement?
So, what this sentence says to me is, during the build-out period, we cannot unilaterally modify or impose new development standards beyond those set forth in this agreement. There was a provision in the Development Agreement that said if there was a situation that was a compromise... if there was a situation that was a compromise of public health and safety, we did have the authority to amend the standards. But what this says is, during that build-out period, we could propose, but we couldn't unilaterally adopt changes to the development standards.
Based on what you just read, or anything else that you're aware of in the development agreement, is there anything that would prohibit the city from applying new or different regulations after the expiration of the build-out period?
No.
Thank you. Can you scroll down, please, Lucy, to section three point two three point two? Can you read that section aloud, Mr. Niven, please? It's a short section.
Twenty-three point two.
Please.
So, it's titled "After Build-Out", "The development standards shall continue to apply to all applications for implementing approvals submitted after expiration of the build-out period, except either party may terminate this agreement, and the zoning and development regulations may be modified as provided in section five point thirteen."
And could you please scroll to five point thirteen? Can you please read the last two sentences of five point thirteen?
Sure.
This is the section that was cross-referenced in section three point two three point two.
Yes, the section's called term.
Beginning with "no sooner than".
Oh, there it is. Sorry. I was missing the beginning of the sentence. "No sooner than six months after the notice of termination, the city shall hold public hearings and shall adopt zoning and related development standards for the urban growth area portion of the property, or portions thereof as determined appropriate by the city. Upon such adoption, this agreement shall terminate, and thereafter, the UGA portion of the property shall be governed by the adopted city zoning and related development regulations."
Thank you. How do you construe that provision in conjunction with the previous provision that you just read? Section three point two point, three point two three point two, with respect to project applications that are submitted after the build-out period?
So, the way I understand the language in these sections of the development agreement is, during the term of the build-out period, applications that were submitted, the city could not change standards, and therefore, they could reach their term, which would be a permit, under the provisions of the development agreement as they were crafted. Once the replacement regulations are adopted, then those regulations shall apply to everything that is not vested.
Thank you. So just to clarify, is it your position that a project permit application submitted during the effective term of the development agreement, but after the build-out period expired, would be fully subjects to the new replacement regulations that the city adopted?
A land, a site development permit or an administrative site development permit would be. The preliminary plat, because it's vestable, is a different thing.
Sure.
Right?
Thank you. Are you aware of any provision of the development agreement that expressly states that applications submitted after the expiration of the build-out period would remain vested to the development standards in the agreement, despite the city's adoption of replacement regulations?
I'm not aware of any provisions like that in the development agreement.
Are you aware of any addendum or amendment or attachment or appendix to the development agreement that would support that interpretation?
There were never any. Thank you.
Did the development agreement contain timeframes governing the city's processing of permit applications that were submitted under the auspices of the agreement?
Yes, there's an appendix within the development agreement. It's Appendix L, I believe, without opening my development agreement, that had timelines associated with different permit reviews. So that was a piece of the development agreement.
Were these timeframes mandatory or binding, or were they aspirational?
Well, there was a caveat within those timelines that identified that they were subject to adequate staffing.
Over the approximately two decades in which the development agreement was in effect, was most of the property that was subject to the agreement ultimately developed?
Oh, yes. There's, you know, the four to one left approximately four hundred and sixty developable acres. And what's left to be developed is, if I was going to guess, I'd say somewhere around thirty or forty acres.
Was IHIFC's property developed at all during this period?
No.
Could you please turn to section five of ordinance number twenty-eight thirty? Are you familiar with this provision?
Yes.
Do you interpret this provision as categorically terminating the nineteen ninety-six development agreement?
Yes.
Could you please turn to IMC eighteen nineteen B two eighty? Are you familiar with this provision?
Yes.
In your official interpretation of the Isiqua Municipal Code, does this provision afford any?
You should ask how he interprets it, not whether he agrees with Mr. Niven.
I'll rephrase the question for council's benefit. How do you interpret this provision in relation to IHIFC's ASTP and STP applications?
What this says to me is, the only thing that vests, under the replacement regulations, are building permits, longer shore plats, and development agreements. ASTPs and SDPs do not.
Thank you. So, to clarify, is it your position that, under this provision, the vesting protection afforded by IMC eighteen nineteen B two eighty does not cover IHIFC's ASTP and STP applications?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Was IHIFC the original landowner and signatory of the nineteen ninety-six development agreement? Do you know when approximately IHIFC acquired its property?
I don't know. I don't know exactly. I believe it was somewhere around twenty thirteen.
Do you know from whom, or from whom it was acquired?
The property was previously owned by the Microsoft Corporation.
After IHIFC acquired its property, approximately how much time was left before the build-out period under the agreement was scheduled to expire?
Well, if it was the fall of twenty thirteen, and the build-out period ended in the fall of twenty seventeen, that would be four years.
In light of this looming deadline, did IHIFC proceed to file land use applications to develop its property under the development agreement after acquiring its property?
They did eventually, but not in those first three years, give or take.
What did IHIFC do instead of seeking to submit project permit applications?
They were pursuing support for a rezon, what would be analogous to a rezon, which would allow residential on the property that they did not have entitlement for.
So to clarify, IHIFC, instead of submitting permit applications to develop its property expeditiously after it acquired the property, sought instead some type of a rezon or amendment to the agreement?
Right. It would be analogous to a rezon.
Okay. And what was the process for that amendment?
Well, the process to amend that, to allow residential, which was already used up within the entitlement allowance within the development agreement, would require the city council to convert some of the commercial or retail entitlement to residential council action.
Did IHIFC submit a formal application or request to that effect to the city council?
It did not.
What did they do in lieu of that?
So, the process began with them trying to get the administration to support that request. The administration, after multiple meetings with the applicant, told them, "We would not support that request unless they had community support." So they then tried, they had a number of meetings with the community to try and garner support for residential mixed-use project. So that is the pathway they went down.
And how long did that process take approximately?
So, conversations and public outreach, I don't know, two-plus years would be my guess.
And were their efforts to obtain public support necessary to proceed with the proposal ultimately successful?
No. Not that I can tell.
Did IHIFC then abandon its efforts to seek some type of a reclassification or de facto rezon under the agreement?
So, IHIFC then submitted their land use permits that are, as I mentioned tonight.
And those are the land use permits that were submitted in two thousand seventeen?
Correct.
So if I understood your testimony correctly, from approximately two thousand thirteen, when IHIFC acquired the property, until two thousand seventeen, when they actually submitted permit applications, they owned the property and were not actively attempting to seek development approval through the submission of permit applications?
Objection. It is testimony, and it mischaracterizes the evidence that I heard. The witness's testimony speaks for itself. It doesn't need re-characterization.
I'm asking clarification of the witness's testimony. I think that, with all respect, I think that's appropriate. Could you answer the question, Mr. Niven?
So, again, all I know is, what was evident from the city staff perspective? And what I can tell you is, when they purchased the property, they sought a land use that was not within their ability to get permits for. They initially went through a phase where they tried to work that out administratively with staff to get staff support for that. When it became, when staff made it clear that we were not going to support that without strong community support, they then turned to get the community support. And that was the next chapter of their process, trying to get something to happen. When that didn't succeed, then they moved on to submitting the permits there in front of the commission's even.
And that process took approximately three and a half or four years, if I heard you correctly?
I, that would, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have several more questions, but I'm mindful of the commission's intent to, I believe, break at nine thirty. And I'm about to shift into a different area of questioning. And I think that this might be an appropriate breaking point, but I would be very, I would be happy to continue with Mr. Niven's testimony if that's the preference of the commission.
If you're going to shift to a different line, I think that probably is appropriate. Ask how long, how much longer would you, do you think you're going to leave us?
I would assume at least thirty, probably, approximately thirty more minutes with Mr. Niven. Thank you.
So, I appreciate, I appreciate the dialogue and the information. We'll look forward to our meeting on the twenty-fourth. Chairman, real quick for the twenty-fourteen, this is a question for our council. Can we, since we don't know what we're going to get in response to the letter from today, can we put a placeholder on the agenda for an executive session in case we need it? So, we can go there.
I would recommend that.
Staff does. Staff will put that. Excellent. So, recap, the response from the city is due the tenth, is that correct?
Yes.
Response from the applicant is due the sixteenth. The tenth by close of business, the sixteenth by noon. And we'll start at seven o'clock the twenty-fourth. I appreciate your time, appreciate your attendance, and adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.